The April 25th, 2023 meeting of the Carlton School District Board of Directors is called to order. Mrs. Hoffman, if you want to lead us in the further.
Flagpole allegiance is alive of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Thank you. Well, the secretary, please call the roll out.
Director Zelinski?
Here.
Director Boziano?
Here.
Director Simster?
Here.
Director Puskar?
Here.
Director O'Brien?
Here.
Director Apple?
Here.
Director Frank?
Here.
Director Honchar?
Here.
Director Schreiber?
Here.
At the beginning of each meeting, we invite the public to ask any questions on the agenda items on our meeting tonight. Does anybody in the public have questions on items on the agenda? So then we'll move forward. And I'll remind everybody, there is a time at the end, you can ask questions about anything you want. Minutes from previous meetings, I'll entertain a motion to approve two items. Number one, the minutes of the March 21st, 2023 voting meeting. And number two, the April 11th, 2023 committee meeting. Do I have a motion for those two items?
That should move.
Second.
Moved from second, thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we talked about personnel matters and confidential student matters. I will now turn to Dr. Crater for your superintendent.
Thank you, Director Schreiber. We have two reports from our administrative team, and then we also have our auditing firm here this evening as well to give us an update on our audit. We'll start with the high school with their report.
I'll get you a hold up here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having the time to hear about what's going on at the high school. Dr. Crater asked me to put together a little update for the end of the year here. So in doing so, we started with upcoming academic events. It is the season for testing. We started the PSAs in the junior high. AP exams are right around the corner, keystones and final exams for seniors and then underclassmen as well. So the month of May is extremely busy. In addition, we have a lot of celebrations. To kick off the month, I want to remind you that Carleton Education Foundation has their taste of Carleton. There are 40 tickets remaining, so it is going to be a sold out crowd. So if you haven't got your tickets, I was told I'd put a plug in for the foundation. Senior rec night is May 10th, that's the dinner with the seniors, and then the award ceremony to follow. May 11th, the band concert. The 12th is the junior high spring flame. The 16th is choral concert. The 24th will be the prom and the gateway clipper fleet. Also, the 24th in the day is Miracle League, our partnership that we have with Stars. And for the last probably eight to 10 years at the St. Clair Community Center, there are about 15 to 20 schools. They bring their buddies and their students with disabilities and their buddies. And if you have the time on that day, I would mark that because it is something truly special. And then the 31st, well, the 25th is Kenningwood, seniors picnic on the 31st, and then commencement on the 2nd. Wanted to bring up some highlights in the community that I thought was pretty neat. Mr. and Mrs. Bionas brought together the students in the culture club and added a number of flags on the ceilings and expanded. It wasn't the foreign language hallway upstairs, and now I think we have 24 new countries recently. And we have tiles coming out in front of the cafeteria, which gives a nice touch, and the kids really enjoy it. And they get to share about their country of origin and then get to learn as well as they mull into our community here. The musical was a smashing success, Little Mermaid. Athletics. Boys' basketball was finished with the record of 19-8, third place team in the field. Quarterfinals, I think that was the first time since 2009 that they achieved that. Girls' basketball, 8-14, and qualified for the playoffs. In bowling, Shelby Palmer and Ryland Henry advanced to regionals. Swimming, section champs for the boys. Advanced three relay teams and one individual to Whipple finals. Girls' swimming lost their first section meet in six years, which is quite a, it's a massive, it's a great record. Finished 6-4 overall. Wrestling, the team qualified for Whipple playoffs. Chase Bandleboro advanced to the state championships. This is something that's really taken up every winter short to qualify for the postseason. So congrats to all the kids and coaches, Ms. Bunch and Mr. Melsom for putting together a dynamic bunch there. Classroom highlights. This is a new one. Mrs. Fisher runs the yearbook class, and it's, I think, it's the second year right now. And I just wanted to show you this link. She had had the students create Instagram accounts for the class, but I just want you to take a look at how neat this is. These are all kids created. Podcasts capturing athletics and arts in the building. And all of these get reviewed before published by Mrs. Fisher. But I just thought this was the next level and a great step forward for our kids, an opportunity. Celebrating kids, the seniors. And this is like three or four pages, so I'd invite you to really take a minute tonight and check out the work that the kids are doing in the classroom. It's quite inspiring.
And Mike?
Yes.
It's contemporary.
Yes, yeah.
It's not the same old same.
Right. And it's giving a chance, it's allowing the kids to show their student voice, don't think I just messed that up.
Just minimize the, minimize the screen at the beginning.
There we go, thanks. Wes Maxwell got our nice write-up in the trib. And the link here is a podcast that he and Ms. Bunch were interviewed on, also something new. Special education, communication, that's an error, it should be community work instruction, that's an error on my part, I'm sorry. These two students, Austin Naemon and Lionel Ward, work at Cookies Cookies Ice Cream, which, how many people have been there? It is the greatest. And these two students have work experience. Mr. Payton has made a great connection with Cookies Cookies Ice Cream, Connie Feta. Fantastic promoting workers with disabilities and giving them opportunities. And I'll just, side story, Jerry's telling me, comes back and is all excited. He's like, man, you should see her face light up when she talks about them. These two are top of, they're out in front. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And they spend, I think about between 10 and 20 hours a week working, and it's fantastic. The guidance department has really upped their game this year with this Moore newsletter. If you haven't had a chance to see that, their link is there as well. And this gives families all the information that they could possibly want to know about the high school and what's coming up after high school, testing, colleges, anything. And then I know Mrs. Gallagher takes suggestions from any parent that calls. Can we put this into the Smores newsletter? And Mrs. Dr. and I and Mrs. Gallagher review it. So.
How is, how is that disseminated into the community, that newsletter?
This is through, comes through this platform, and I think it has a link to Facebook as well.
So people need like, don't they find this by going through Facebook or?
And we've pushed it out in all of our communication from the guidance, from traditional paper to the new guidelines. Which you'll see, do best, just notes to parents. PSSA testing schedule. Free online tutoring.
I was, I was just like thinking, George, you often bring up like, you know, certain people in the community maybe not have, have a computer or.
So.
Barriers or whatever.
And I'll note they do hard copies of this as well, if that's what you're leading to. But we, I mean, I know we don't produce those, but I'll note the common apps. So it has, it's really a great stuff, and it seems to be getting some good reviews from the community. Additionally. Partner Up, May 10th, 13 seniors are invited to interview with companies, PNC, Giant Eagle, CVS, and Hopesing Gang, full-time employment. Six students from the 21-22 Partner Up cohort obtained jobs. We had 19 students enroll in the program when it started. So we have 13 headed to the interviews, which is a pretty good number. Our student assistants addressing some of the needs that we have with the students this year, I wanted to bring this up. I know Dr. Sertie, I think, has slated to present it in the next meeting. This year, we've had quite a busy year. We've had 129 referrals up to this point, and it's April. Typically, we see 100 referrals throughout the course of the year. But the point of me bringing that up is the fact that the teams of teachers and the mentor teachers are really pulling their work extremely hard. And working to strike the relationships with the students and listen. But there, this year, we have noticed there has been a greater pull on things that are not necessarily related to academics. And I am very proud of how the staff team has responded to the challenge. You ought to be extremely proud as well. Just a relationship with HSao and Angela's Brett from Tendalo, it's fantastic. And she's worked to get a ton of information to the families as well. So that's a success. And that is my presentation this evening. Now, 1, 2, 3 Cougars, as my sign off.
Mike, I have a question. For, say for instance, Smores newsletter, it looks like there's a lot of information.
Tons of information.
Is there a translation option for all of our?
Great suggestion. I think we do have a translation option, I think we can get that and make sure that that occurs. This is the first year we've launched it, so we're always looking to improve and I'll work on that. Move that forward.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, I think since that's, it's in HTML text, I think on your browser, you can do a pull down and get it translated automatically.
I really like the Instagram that Mrs. Fisher's class is doing. Is there any way that we could use some of those graphics on the Carleton Facebook page? Like, so the students can feel as though their work is being published, whether that's like Carleton Athletics, if they're creating one, or the school district's page that they, you know what I mean? Because they're creating something, whether it's like, because I saw up there it said game day. Like, if it's a baseball game, maybe Carleton Athletics can save that, and then the student can be like, oh, wow, my, I got boosters.
Right along in step with that, I think that's a great suggestion. The yearbook students, all of our TVs in the building, they're running all of the productions that, all the game day pictures and photos and celebrations and the fans getting hyped. They're running all of those. And this is, will also be, is published through the yearbook class. But that's the type of thing that we're, we keep trying to create avenues for kids to produce and publish their product. What's exciting about this is this is a tangible product at the end of their work that people share and enjoy.
But yeah, I think Mrs. Bionas can get ahold of those and publish them out. Maybe even just push the link out and then feature a few.
Thank you very much, it was great seeing everyone.
All right, let's go with Crafton.
Hello, everyone, nice to see you. I'm glad to see everyone and share some of the good things that are happening at Crafton. The last time I was here is kind of where I'm starting from the information, I think it was November, the last time was I actually presented. So I wanted to share the things that have been happening since then. I always like to start off with our three Bs, because that is always a theme at Crafton Elementary, being respectful, being responsible, and being ready. So we shared that we received the banner that we were recognized for tier one sustaining through AIU. And we will be applying for the recognition of tier one with fidelity this year. So hopefully, we will, we will receive that. We'll get notified in the summer, don't let us know if we did receive it. I wanted to share the partnerships that have been happening. One of our goals at Crafton is always to partner with the community and try to see how we can bring them in and integrate it with the things that we're already doing. So I did talk about Amazon coming to Crafton in November, but I'm going to hit about their actual visit. The last two visits of Chil Mobile, Read Across America, because we bring in a lot of community members. And a new thing we started just these past couple months called Cougar Clubs, which is a tie-in to our PBIS tier two. So Amazon visited during the Hour of Code, a local person, Justin Marks, if you know him. He's a senior technical account manager at Amazon, he organizes this whole event. He brings people in from Amazon in different departments, so if it's sales or engineering. And he provides us an assembly to just get everyone kind of acclimated to what the day will look like. And then he, him and his team, they go into the class rooms and they introduce depending on the grade level. Flappy Bird, Dance Party, Imagine a World, or Animations at Talk, and they program or they code, and they love it. So that has been kind of a tradition we started for a few years, and it went great. It's always nice to be in person, because I think last year we might have done it online, and that was difficult. So glad to have him back, he's a local. The Chil Mobile unit finished up their third time at Crafton, so I put the weeks there. And I just found out that the Pittsburgh Pirates are going to send us our kids vouchers for one free ticket for Pirate game. And then a discount for any additional tickets that they would like to buy. It's going to be during the Pirate Mental Health Action Game on May 6th, so we're super excited. Our staff also received three professional, professional development days during their staff meeting, where they focused on just our chill corners that they gave us. Mindfulness, coping skills. It was, the staff was very appreciative of that. And then, like I said, each classroom did receive a chill corner that they can keep. And it had a bench, it had different sensory toys, a timer, reflection sheets. So the kids have definitely been taking advantage of that. Okay, okay. We had Read Across America, some of you came and read to our students, and that was one way we love to integrate the community into our events. We also had police officers, fire department came, the local library came. And during that week, we have a door decorating contest, Mrs. Ficcarelli's class one. We also had different reading challenges and trivia for the students and dress up days, as you can see. Like, dress up as your favorite book character, or crazy hair day, things like that. The kids love, you know, elementary loves themed things. Our Cougar Clubs is something we started since we did receive the award for tier one. We thought it was time to push it to tier two, and that was addressing our students' needs and that 5%, how can we help them? Because we have the universal things in place, like our Cougar Coupons, our Paws 200 board. And now it was time to hit that 5% to 10% of maybe truancy or office discipline referrals. So we thought a great way would be to implement Cougar Clubs, make it sound cool, make it sound fun. So some students were kind of pushed into certain directions. So we have like a truancy club, but it's called the Breakfast Club, so it's very cool. We have like an office discipline referral club, it's called the Three Bs Club. Now, some students were actually like pushed into it, some students volunteered for these, or like picked these clubs, because they also could choose them, which was interesting. Because even though that maybe the office discipline club was meant to sound like we're reviewing three Bs, they're making like a video. And they're going to show it to the students about the three Bs. So it's pretty excited, exciting. And then other clubs that teachers got to choose, that they thought the students would be interested, like a big one was our Chess and Rubik's Cube Club. I run a green team club, which is almost like a student council type club. There was another big one is a walking club, you wouldn't think, but students love to do that. So they, they were, some of them were simple, but the kids were really interested in it. We kicked it off with an assembly where Mr. Ficcarelli dressed up as the Cougar. And we threw light bulbs out into the crowd, they loved it, they were very pumped for this. Now, this was only for grades three through six, because we were kind of piloting this, this idea. But it worked, because in K to 2 during this time, it's like once a month, we focus on assemblies with that, we brought career people in. So our first one were park rangers, as you can see on the lower slide, we brought in Mr. McSlithers. And the students loved seeing a snake as they walked through their seats. So they would hear an assembly about some sort of career, and then they would go back and do a little activity on it, and then also hit our act 339 obligations as well. So once we kind of get this rolling, we do hope to include K to 2. Like I said, there once a month for about 35 minutes as we iron out all of the challenges right now. I didn't have this in the agenda, but I did want to say supporting music in our school was the month of April, and we had wonderful concerts. We had a chorus concert, we had a band concert, we also did those concerts for the students in-house. We were able to bring back parent assemblies for our third and fourth grade students, which we had to stop during the COVID times. So that was a great kind of tradition to bring back. We had students participate in the PMEA band and district chorus, and I think district chorus is maybe this weekend. And then we had several field trips to the symphony. So I have to say kudos to Mr. Peori for really bringing everything back with the band. Unfortunately, he has shared at many of concerts, he is retiring, so the parents and students were sad to hear that. But he definitely left a great legacy and traditions, and we hope to just carry on. Some Crafton upcoming events, we are in the midst of the PSSAs, second day, and it's been going very smoothly, so we're happy that our planning paid off. Next week is math on Monday, Tuesday, then science for fourth grade on Thursday and Friday. And we can breathe. And then we go into more. Teacher and staff appreciation will be the week of May 8th. We have a lot of things planned to show our appreciation. And we have Junior Achievement Day coming, which fits right into our career readiness and focus. They're coming May 22nd. I believe we partnered with Robert Morris, but this year we partnered with Citizens Bank. So they'll be coming to do our junior achievement activities. And I think always a Crafton Rotary, because they supply lunch for the junior achievement volunteers, because they volunteer and they're there all day. So the kids love it, the teachers love it too, so they have great activities. We have Fun Day happening on May 31st. We have bounce houses and snow cones and a lot of good things that we traditionally have at our Fun Day. And sixth grade promotion, which are all invited, we can get the time to for you, is June 1st, it's usually around nine o'clock. And we'll see our sixth graders off to the junior senior high. That is Crafton in a nutshell, do you have any questions?
How's the window stuff coming for you guys? Disruptive or is it?
That's a great question. The person who I guess is the manager of the windows, Matt, he's been wonderful. He's communicated so much with me, because there have been some like hiccups of weather or change of scheduling. It's been great, it hasn't been disruptive, and they have, you know, been in and out of a classroom usually in one day. So it is nice that we actually have that old computer lab that's still open right now, so we don't have to disrupt library and put all the kids in there or something. So we've been putting the kids in to that room for one day, they do the windows. You might hear some like drilling or something here and there, but it is not consistent. And I walk in the classrooms and the light is amazing. If you don't know, I walk so good, when I walk in, I'm like, oh my gosh, that's sunlight. Like, it is, it is great, but lots of good feedback from the students and the staff. And then even community members will stop me if I'm outside at bus duty or something, and they'll just say, your windows looked amazing. Like, so subtle, but it pops, you know? So all good feedback from the windows, so. Yeah, appreciate the support on that.
Yeah, I was surprised myself just how clear the windows are. Just like looking up at the school and.
You don't realize. It's, I mean, they're, I would say halfway done, if not more. They have the whole old side done, and they'll be working on the new side. They took a two-week break, of course, because of PSSAs.
Oh, good, yeah.
Yes, we don't want to disrupt with even the least bit of noise. They were fine with that.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Marshall, do you get window covers in the spring or do you?
They've already started putting the blinds up, so the blinds are all up on our second floor. And they're still going to put this thing to put the third floor, and the first one is not completely done. So they wait till all of them are done, and then they are going to replace our window sills inside too. The blinds are nice, because the old windows were inside the two panes of glass, and a lot of them were broken, so they were always shut, they couldn't open them. So when the new windows came in, they were like, there's actual sunlight coming through. And they have complete, you know, they're completely in charge of the blinds now. Little things, little things that are happening. Any other questions?
How's the parking lot been so far?
I mean, it's been a lifesaver with the windows, because the windows, people took up 10 extra parking places in the back. So without the new parking lot, I don't know what we would have done. So that has saved this project of, you know, the teachers are able to park right across the street and walk right over. So it has been a lifesaver.
Still no crosswalk?
No crosswalk, is that what you said? No, there's only a crosswalk on that far corner. That is true.
Is that a state thing or a borough? If we want one, do we should request one?
It is a, I believe it's a state road. And so we, I believe, talked about trying to get a crosswalk there and a stop sign. And it's definitely something either at the borough level or the state level. I think the borough said that they couldn't do it because it was a state, state street.
Pretty awkward, the crosswalk there.
I feel it.
We can probably investigate that.
Yeah.
It has been awkward, but it is nice that they do follow that one crosswalk, because that is where the crossing guard is. So it is helpful to try to get them to go over there. But if we had a crosswalk there, maybe we could move the crossing guard or, I don't know. What's that? No, sorry. No, sorry. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Next up, we'll go with Carnegie. And this is Mazaco.
Hi. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm excited to tell you all of the new things that are going on at Carnegie Elementary. Firstly, we'll start with, as you all know, we have a growing English language population of students. And so we were so fortunate through our partnership with the AIU to get another teacher to help service the needs of those students. And we welcomed Ms. Julie Fayley to Carnegie Elementary, where she sees students through the morning hours until 11:30. So that's been a great addition and help with supporting the growing needs of our EL population of students. Secondly, in the new category, we have welcomed our new secretary. So if you come to Carnegie Elementary, you'll be welcomed by a new face. Her name is Gail Hoppy, and she's been a wonderful addition. Her transition is rather new. She just started maybe a few weeks ago, two or three weeks ago now. And she's jumped right in and really has hit the ground running. She's had some subbing experience in other districts and similar roles, so we're very fortunate to have that background and expertise. Also, in our building, we have had the addition of new handrails at the back of the building. This has helped eliminate some potentially, you know, safety issues with students. As I say, do use those stairwells, both of those pictured there, to go out to the playground during recess times. We have had some exciting experiences for our students as well as we've partnered with different community members and groups. One of the partnerships we have had welcomed into our school at least two times this year. We've brought them in through the Parkway. And one of their teacher is Dawn Wood, and she works with her students to provide a program for younger students revolving around safety and specific career readiness with safety careers such as the nursing, nursing and health, other health-related fields. It has been something that our students have shown a lot of interest in, and we have been fortunate to have this partnership with Ms. Wood and her students, who do a wonderful job. Truly engaging and relevant. And the students, my students from Carnegie have asked great questions and shown a lot of interest in, so we've been fortunate to have that. Another great event that we had, partnership that we had a few months back, was with the education partnership. We, they bring in local community sponsors, and they supply just random student needs that they can bring home. Kids that have supplies. And they really focused this assembly on maker learning. And it was fun, because they were very interactive. They picked teachers, some of their sponsors as well, paired them up with students, and had a contest on the stage of making a house. Or making another structure out of just the materials that they had given them. And there were materials that they also got the packets, in their packets, to take home. So gave them a little taste of what they'd be able to do. It was a wonderful day. So much support. Ms. Volgliano joined us. And our students loved it. We had a fourth grader give a speech about the impact of the materials that they received through that partnership to thank the sponsors. So it was just a great demonstration of collaboration there. Some of the other things that we have going on in Carnegie Elementary, we started a chess club as well. It's with grades fifth and sixth, fifth and sixth graders. In Mr. Donnelly's classroom, they have the opportunity to engage in chess activities and learn the game. Some of them are advanced, some of them are beginner. So peers work together to share their skills and help encourage and enhance those skills amongst their peers. It has been a great motivator for some students who really seek to engage with their peers but don't have the opportunity, as it is between the two grades. And sometimes those grades can be separate, so we like to see that. We have another opportunity for our peers to engage. We have sixth graders working with kindergarteners. They meet once a month. They do activities that maybe are academically related or share other interests. We have partnerships with our parents. We bring them into kindergarten classrooms on a regular basis. They do reading or other crafts and activities with the students. And in second grade, we have a partnership with an international therapy dog. His name is Oliver, and his handler, Ms. Sandy, who come in and they read about once a month with some of our second grade students. They love it. They enjoy engaging with the little friend there. So we're excited to have them. K-9, I was going to say T-1. We have had a lot of interaction with the community as well as partnerships with peer-to-peer from the high school. So we have the Girls Supporting Girls Club, run by Dr. Sertie at the high school. And we have a group of girls in fifth and sixth grade working with Mr. Alexander. And one of the things that they had gone on was a trip to Max Ovenko to appreciate the art, where art teacher Ms. Aranda also accompanied them for the unique learning experience. And then we had, with those same group of girls sponsoring, an International Empowerment Summit for Women. It encompassed the Light Initiative. It was held at Carnegie, Carnegie, the music hall there. And there were a lot of community members. There were some speaking from Carnegie Coffee Company, telling her story about how she came to be in her position as a business leader. And there was a Michelin-starred chef also that was featured as a speaker. And it was just a demonstration of collaboration and community. It was very nice to see. Our mayor from Carnegie also joined. And then we had the same thing. We had a parks rangers come in to speak to all of our students. They toured each classroom with some of their skins and skulls, and they talked about different things with our students that surround us at nature and habitats. We have an initiative right now with our Carnegie Color Rotary Club and the Early Act Club. They are selling flags or patchworks, little patches, blue and yellow, to support children in Ukraine. And we are building a flag on the front of our building with each of the rectangles sold in our support of the children of Ukraine. It's a great thing, because we have a lot of children that came from Ukraine that are in our building, so we love to see that reciprocal support. We also had the Steelers come in. The Steelers organization, representatives from their organization, including their mascot there, who held classes during Mr. Ficcarelli's gym classes just last week. The students, as well as many of the staff members, got in on the fun. And it was just a great day to see them promote that physical activity and healthy habits amongst our students. We also celebrated Read Across America Month. We had some activities, and the culmination of these activities was a family reading night hosted by our PTA. Many of our staff members also assisted. There was a book sale through Scholastic run by Ms. Seriani. And we had Dr. Crater as one of our reading guests throughout the week. So students in second grade really enjoyed seeing him in their classroom and hearing the stories that he was able to share with them. We are very excited about partnerships that we have and the visit that we have with our school coming up. We are going to welcome guests from San Diego, California. The school district is called Cuyahoga Valley Unified School District. They are a leader in, for their transformative work with career readiness. And specifically, they started an initiative, The World of Work, which now has a chapter in Pittsburgh. And they're interested in coming to see the work that we're doing in the Chill Project and how we support our students through mental health initiatives. So we're excited to have them into our building, and we look forward to learning and collaborating with this group of dynamic educators. And some of the highlights on our horizon for the month of, the ending of April and the month of May. We too have spent a lot of time planning, and now we are in the midst of our PSSA testing. I will report happily that it has gone very smoothly the last two days. I'm very thankful for that. We're on the countdown now. A few more days here tomorrow, the beginning of next week, and the end of next week with our fourth grade science. We have Teacher Appreciation Day following that as well, a week, excuse me, from the eighth to the 12th. And our teachers as well as staff will have various things to show that are of much support for all that they do every day for our students. We will have Field Day on May 30th. We will have, we will host the graduates of Carlington Senior High School on May 31st. We will have them parade around our building. I think that's a wonderful way to motivate students at the lower level that they will be that one day. And to really raise up the graduates, to show them what an amazing accomplishment it is, and to appreciate their hard work getting them there. We will also have a sixth grade send-off, showing our own sixth graders how proud we are for all that they have done and accomplished, and set them on the path to success as they matriculate into seventh grade next year. And lastly, we have something I'm very proud of. We are bringing Maker Learning, the magic of Maker Learning, to Carnegie Elementary. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with Math Maker Space. It's a local initiative. They are going to have a space in Carnegie Elementary. It's going to be housed as part of the library. It won't take away from our book space at all. So they're very innovative in the way that they plan and lay out the area and arrange their space there. But we are going to be enhancing the learning that we're able to provide for our students through this initiative. And if you don't mind indulging just for a second, I would like for you to see and hear for yourself just how amazing this initiative is. We're not going to sign up. We're just going to listen. Uh-oh. If we have any sound.
We don't have the sound cord hooked up.
That's okay. All right, well then, next time. I can send you all the link, and you could watch it in your spare time as well. And lastly...
It's not hooked up for this part?
No. Oh, I wanted you to hear the performance that the students put on for the education partnership. It was, it was great, because what happened was Ms. Light was so stressed and embarrassed that the music wouldn't play. But we encouraged her, as well as the students, to sing anyway. And it was really stunning to hear them sing without the music.
It was amazing.
Just as there. And they sang the same song for their spring performance with the music. It worked that night, but it was really, I myself appreciated it more without the sound.
Jen, if you go back a slide and unplug the link to the board.
This?
Yep, just from right there. And now on the laptop, just advance the slide, but we'll be up here from there.
Okay.
(singing) Sing along. We can write in everything. Let the things be true and say.
So, let the music play, but... Most of all, we still watch the night, just as I said, so I was very proud of that. If you have any questions for me?
I want to say something about the spring concert. We had over 20 kids in a band at Carnegie Elementary. And of course, you can't expect too much with a band. A lot of squeak squeak honk honks. But they were in sync, and they were in tune. And then the choir has over 40 kids, I think 45. They were so good. And eventually, all of them will be up here to pump power into this junior, senior high school. Mrs. Light is so animated. She is just amazing.
She is. If I was on the big screen, you would say...
She is great. One more question. How did the kids react to the geese police? You didn't say anything about the geese police.
Oh, I had a lot, and I forgot. But actually, I asked that the geese police don't come when the students are out. Maybe they feel a little bit too much when they're there.
I would think so, yeah.
And the geese police are doing their thing. But yes, we have the geese police who are trying to eliminate both the geese and...
The waste.
The waste that they distribute through our playground, so it's, yeah. But if anybody has any other questions. Or different out. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great reports from K through 12. Thank you all. And how we support all this is through our financials. And every year, we go through and have a financial report from our auditor, Steve Nidenberger is here to give us an update on our most recent audit. So Steve, I'll let you take it from here and share with the community our most recent audit.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for letting me be here tonight to give a brief presentation relating to 2122 school year audit. If you have your audit reports in front of you, I'll refer to a few page numbers throughout. The first thing I'd like to talk about though is the first letter in the report. It's the Independent Auditor's Report. That's what we contribute to the audit. And you'll see there is a three-page letter, right applicable contents, and it's an unqualified opinion on the financial statements. That's the highest level of opinion we can provide on the financials. There are no qualifications on that, also known as a clean audit opinion. I just want to take a quick look at a couple of numbers related to the audit. First exhibit is the government funds balance sheet on page 18, exhibit 3. You'll see the first column there is the general fund, which I mean, all of them from the school district. Total assets is June 30th, 2022, were 15.4 million. While you had total liabilities and also preferred inclusive resources, about 7.4 million. This resulted in your fund balance at the end of the year being 7.9 million. We'll discuss that in a more detailed moment. The other column here is the non-major fund. That's categorized that way under government accounting standards. But that's actually your capital projects fund. The main thing to see there is you had 701,000 dollars at year-end in assets, which was cash, and only 45,000 liabilities. So your assigned fund balance was 655,000. If you look two pages forward, to page 20, exhibit 5, it's the results of operations for these same two government funds. I'll just point out briefly, the general fund revenues were 34.2 million, while the expenditures were 32.4 million. This resulted in an increase in your fund balance of 1,795,000. You started the year at 6,184,000, and ended the year at 7,795,000. And you see the capital projects fund, the only activity it had was interest earnings of 753 dollars during the 2122 year. Another fund type at the school district is on page 24, exhibit 8. This is a proprietary fund, and it is your food service fund. Just want to show three times from the bottom. You had a large increase in the food service fund, 416,000 during the year. Keep in mind, this was due to all the meals being free. You can see the federal revenue was below over a million dollars alone. And it was a very commonplace for a lot of school districts' food service funds to have very good years due to free meals. The final fund type at the district is actually on page 27, exhibit 10. This is a custodial fund, and that's your student activities monies. At year-end, you had 86,407 in student activities monies. That was the highlights of the exhibits. I just want to draw your attention to a couple footnotes to the financial statements. The first one I want to draw your attention to is on page 41. On page 41, this is note seven. It's the long-term liabilities footnote. And the main thing I want to point out there was your obligation, your general obligation of warrants outstanding in January 2022. There was 4.1 million outstanding. The next thing I want to mention is actually the last footnote. You wrote it off and flipped it, but these statements implement GASB, which is the government accounting standard for announcement number 87. And what that did was that treated how leases in the school district are recorded differently. Mainly your copier leases and some of your small operating leases that would be. And even though it was a pronouncement that we had to put into these financial statements, the fact that, sort of funny when you look at this, was only 5,058 dollars when we're talking about a 34 million. So I mean, just keep in mind, there are other things behind the scenes here. But I just want to draw it through text here. Just two things left. Start on page 58 is a detailed budget tax analysis for general fund. behind the scenes here. I just want to draw it through text here. Just two things left. Start on page 58 is a detailed budget actual analysis for general fund. Just want to throw it out actually on page 59, two-thirds of the way down, the total revenues. Total revenues were budgeted at 30.9 million and they came in at 34.2 million. So this was a very positive favorable variance of 3.3 million. Keep in mind, well over half of that was due to the ESRS monies and the federal monies that were not known and planned the budget for the 2122 year. Conversely, on the other side, expenditures, if you flip to page 65, and those are some page 65, the total expenditures didn't exceed the budget amount, but once again, that was all covered by the increased expenditures related to federal expenses. So with that all being said, you budgeted a break even 2122 school year, but you actually had an actual 1,795, so it was a positive favorable result versus budget for the school year. So the other things I just mentioned, the last thing I want to talk about was actually the end of this audit report is the single audit. It covers about the last 20 pages, but basically anytime there's federal expenditures in a school district of 750,000 or more, we have to perform a single audit. Carleton's federal expenditures were 3.9 million during 2122 year. So we performed a single audit. We had to test the child nutrition cluster, but we also had to test the ESTR, ESRS money, the education stabilization fund. And I'm pleased to say that this year, this is a big thing, you had a clean single audit, both the opinion on the federal expenditures and also the internal controls relating to them. Because keep in mind that the previous audit, when we tested the food service fund, there were some weaknesses in the controls that we discussed at length in the previous meeting. So this is what you strive for, obviously, a clean audit opinion on the whole financial statements, but also a single audit by our own hands. And I'm pleased to say that that's the results of our audit this year. I noticed a lot of numbers are somewhat confusing unless you have the governmental accounting financial statements. But I want to see if anyone had a question maybe before this meeting, or actually just what I talked about previously.
I have one quick question. Going back to the food fund, cafeteria fund.
Yeah, exhibit?
Refresh my memory. Those are monies that are required by law to be separated from the general budget and incomes have to stay in that fund and can't be mixed with the general.
Yeah, basically what it is, is it's thought to be a proprietary fund. It's supposed to stand alone. In reality, school districts' food service funds don't make money. Usually they usually need subsidies from the general fund to be able to run themselves. We're in a weird state the last couple of years and probably for next year still, where they're making money because the federal government has provided, all meals being free. So it's really different. But yes, you can't use those monies to go to another fund. The only thing you could do with it would be a little bit interesting to be, you had to, you could actually buy a food service fund. Customary in the past, you have done that some, but sometimes you also have some some capital projects. So that's the only thing you could really do with the money.
Gotcha. Okay.
Steve, I have a few questions. So when you all do the audit, to what extent do you or don't you track two things? One is the, like the assumptions behind, because you've got, I mean, half of this is variance to budget, right? To what extent do you look into the assumptions behind the budget? And then the other is, to what extent do you, in your audit, do you track sources of funding to where they're spent in the audit? Is that, because it's not reflected in the report at all?
Right. So the first thing I'll talk about is the budget. You make sure that your budget is passed appropriately and, you know, isn't violating any standard of the state. But we don't pass judgment on, was it a good budget? And that's for all schools and boys. I'll be honest with you, it's good to see the results better than the actual budget. Sometimes that's conservative, other times it's a matter of major changes that maybe weren't there at budget time, with, you know, expenditures and everything. Yeah, we're not here to say how good of a budget was. This is a financial statement on there. We're basically doing this two things. We're making sure the statements are presented fairly and accurately under the current standards they have to be. And we're also making sure that the internal controls are in place to support the statements. So that's really our role. So that really is what the budget relates to. As far as your second question, as far as money coming in and going out relating to special funding, the single audit does that. You'll see on page, maybe the actual page number, where it lists every source of federal money and how much was spent and how much came in and was recognized, that is on page 81. We're required to know all your federal expenditures and match it with the programs. Basically, the revenue has to match the expenditures in that the cash flow of the revenue was different for federal purposes. We also keep track of your state. That is not, it's in the budget actual analysis, the line items, but there's not other items about the state in there. And then some of your grants, you know, you know, that are from local sources. We're basically making sure our money is spent properly and does that match the money coming in. Because this is a cruelest audit, so in some cases, you could receive 100,000 dollars from a source, but if you didn't make any expenditures, that's preferred revenue. Or it could be the other way. You spend 100,000 related to grant, you have to receive the money as a receivable. So that's more or less what we do. I don't know if that really answered your question or what.
You answered it perfectly. That's exactly what I was looking for. So I guess the next question is, because when I look at, when I look at our variances, like if I look at a major variance in our budget, which I'll define as like 100,000 or more.
Okay.
From, like if I just look at every line item, on the, you know, the, on the note section, you've got a section there that has variances. And I'll just say, well, you know, between budget and actual 100,000 is what determines whether it's a major variance or not. It seems like really what's driving most of that variance, which we had in excess between our revenue versus expenditure, what's driving it is mostly A, local revenue, and then the combination of B, federal sources, and C, on the expenditure side, it's all purchased services and property. And so it seems to me that a lot of that is, when I'm looking at local revenue, that means it's one of two or a combination of tax valuation going up over the last year or two, and then collection, whatever our collection rate assumption is. And I think it's more of the first. And then when I look at the federal sources versus all that, I mean, when I look at it, it's really, especially over the last two years, it's property and then purchased services. And that seems to dovetail pretty well with spending of the ESRS fund, just federal funding.
I can definitely say that the expenditures you noticed are really directly to the federal funding, for sure. And I just want to add one thing about the local sources. There's a lot of pronouncements put out, the school districts management, that to think that your EIT, your earned income tax revenues on the local revenues were going to go down once COVID hit. So for two or three years, that was built into the budgets. Unfortunately, those assumptions are not accurate, to be flat out. Every school we have has huge variations positively with earned income tax, real estate transfer, some of those ones. Local real estate varies a little bit in general. It's greater than was anticipated because actually collection percentages went up the two years since COVID. So I just want to point out that some of the variances you're seeing in the local section are not unusual to this district. We do about 34 school districts, and it's been the same two areas.
That's what I was going to ask you. How have you seen that replicate in other school districts? Is it similar?
It's hilarious. It's almost exactly the same in every district. If you see here, three big variances in a row, earned income tax, real estate transfer, and delinquent. I can't speak from the economic standpoint, but for some reason, there was more money pumped into the system through COVID. And people want to keep their houses. They're buying new houses. And somehow people are making more money, even though there's a lot of people not working.
So can you explain that delinquent? I didn't understand the delinquent. I understand the others, but the delinquent, I didn't understand why that would go up.
Uh, the...
Delinquent.
You didn't, why the collections would go for delinquent, that you said?
Yeah.
Um, I think what happened there, similar to the other thing, is people are getting notices and they realize they're behind. And keep in mind too, when you go to sell your house, if you're behind on tax, you have to pay that up. So some of it's just directly with the home sales going up.
Okay.
The delinquent collections go up. Someone has to pay those off, whether it's the buyer or seller. You know, someone loaned a foreclosure, well, those taxes still have to be paid before you get that property. So the delinquent does go hand in hand with the real estate transfer we're seeing. And the earned income tax sort of fits right in with that also. I'll be honest with you, you know, the local real estate one's probably one that we, it varies a little bit with schools. Because if you really budget close to your collection percentages, you know, they've only gone up a little bit, you know. So that one maybe, might be a little bit more of a district specific, but we're seeing the same thing in other ones. But those other three are real common. If you, if you flip through audit reports, which are public information, if you go into the school district website and look up, you know.
But based on the way you do your audit, you wouldn't know what percentage across the board is based on. For the most part, like you wouldn't know how much is due to, I mean, we can figure it out for our own district, how much is due to collection rate assumption versus property value rising, right? But in your audit, you wouldn't see that in our district?
We do that analysis.
Or you wouldn't see that in others? Or you would?
Okay. We do that analysis. It's not reflected in this report. What we're looking for is things that may identify something odd going on. I could tell you that we're looking at the collection percentage of each of your three areas here, looking at historic value, comparing industry standards. And then also, we look at, what's the assessment on, you know, is mill exchange, like those things? Because we sort of recalculate, well, what's going on here really? Not so much based on the budget versus that, but actual this year versus previous years, based on what we expect. Part of the audit is very detailed, actual audit. The real estate tax collectors, in this case, Jordan Tax, does most of the collection, obviously, for the district. They're deputized. And, you know, where are we looking to see? A, okay, you started out at this assessed value. Does that make sense? Does everything recalculate? Are collections similar, you know, and everything like that? I'm not sure if that's...
No, you're asking my question. That was really helpful. Thank you.
So, but yeah, the biggest parts of this audit report, when it comes down to, besides making sure these statements are right and the internal controls are in place, there's a lot of effort put into the federal, and there's also a lot of effort put into your local taxes, mainly current real estate. You may say, why? Well, those are your biggest sources. And on the expenditure side, that's to tie all the payroll to contracts and all that. So I mean, when you look at payroll and benefits, that's a big part of your expenditure side. And if you can get your local tax and federal money is under control, you know, it's just sort of outfits. Because your state's so dictated to you, it really doesn't, there's nothing you guys do currently. It's all based on like what your transportation expense was previous year. You know, things like that dictate your numbers. You don't have as much say in those. But the federal and the local.
Yeah. And the way ESRS work, there's going to be some disconnect between when we have work done versus when we receive the funding, right? Because we need to spend the money. There's a money allocated to us. We've got a program to spend it, but there's a dislocation between when we get the work done versus when we receive the federal funding, right? And then if you're taking that over the course of a fiscal year, there's going to be an offset there, right? And so we can look at it over the last year, this year, next year, and there's always going to be that offset. And over time, that's, it's going to dissipate as the ESRS funding disappears. Is that fair?
Yes, because this ESRS funding is unusual. There's never been this type of money pumped in federally in a several, three, four year period.
And we don't receive the, I, my understanding, we don't receive the federal funding until we spend it. Is that correct? Or at least we're committed.
Correct. Especially with ESRS.
Where it's a reimbursement, yes, the ESRS, which is a huge chunk of that. We're reimbursed, we're not paid up.
Absolutely. But yeah, and this is, you know, a lot easier to see from the report, but a lot of the monies were used for, you know, more one-time projects, things like that, which is good instead of adding positions and hiring, wants to put those positions if you have to do that in the future. So Carleton has it in a pretty good way. I mean, that's, that's not part of our audit, but I mean, you can just see it, you know, some districts were adding positions, which may not be the best.
Right. And I think that's when you look at the variances, when you look at major variances from last year or two years ago to this year, it's, the vast majority of them are in property.
Property change, so yeah.
All the technology, all the ability improvements, all that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Last question.
Yes.
Back to the food service fund again. So I remember a couple of years ago, there was some kind of accounting change that took into account pension liability for the food fund, and it showed an incredibly weird net number. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, what happened a few years back, they made you put on, remember, you're paying in the PISsors.
Right.
And they're saying it's a proprietary fund, that's defined as a self-sustained fund. So all your employees, you gotta calculate the PISsors percentage that they're owed, their payment out, which even though the district isn't doing that, shows a paper number. So basically, in January 2002, you have a 383,000 liability for net pension liability in your food service fund, which isn't really a true liability.
Right.
So what I spoke of was your net, your net position, even for that very positive year you had, is still a negative 33,000 in the food service fund. But keep in mind, 383,000 isn't really, you have a positive in your food service. And the way the school keeps their books, which is fine, how they require it on their own part, it should be positive. But when you put into these financial statements, things have to be moved around to, you know, comply. And that's where you see that negative. So that's probably what you're...
I was curious, does it, no, here does it show an actual cash balance?
Right. Yeah, because everything, it's always amusing for people because these statements have to be on the cruel basis. That's not really how schools bend for the most part. You know, it's, it's a real shame. You look at this report, probably around 90 pages on this, and at the end of the day, there's probably only 10 or 12 pages are really relevant for the board to make their decisions.
Right.
And it really mattered to the district. However, they want to compare you to a corporation, so they make you go through all these things. And there's more about that pipeline. Next year, you have to have all your software agreements have to be looked at, make sure they're reflected properly. Say you enter into a three-year software agreement, well, it can't just be expensed that one year. It has to be put as a referral or a quell, you know. And it's just, it's convoluted, these statements, and made it very difficult for board members who are good trying to understand and see what's going on, looking at these, you're like, you know, that's a shame. I mean, it's, but you have to have an audit, you have to have these statements out there for your debtors, for the state, for the federal government.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll say I've noticed two things when I look at it over a trend. One, I mean, there's the state funding variances over the last couple of years and then the federal. But I think overall, if I look at variances to budget, there's a clear trend where we're tightening. I think the forecast versus budget, if you take out those outliers, it's definitely getting tighter. And the second thing is if I look at, overall, if I look at financial ratios and things that matter to the school district, if I have, I've got 10 that I track. And of those, I mean, the two that are highlighted, that look bad to me, are driven by those federal and state sources of funding. It's based on a discrepancy between how much funding you control versus what you don't control. And then also, your total instruction expenditures versus total expenditure. Well, our total expenditures are going up because of all that federal funding that we're spending on our properties. And so that's driving, you know, it's, it's decreasing our percentage of instruction, but that's driven by something that's separate. So overall, if I look at financial health ratios, everything's, I think it's reassuring to me.
And if anybody has any other questions in the future, if they want to refer to Key, if you'd like to, you know, continue answering your further questions. And actually, it was very refreshing. We do a lot of these audit presentations, and quite frankly, most of the time, people just get chucked on their mouths and we're talking. So that was interesting.
Hey, Steve, we have some questions at Pathfinder. Will you be coming?
I believe that maybe, if I'm understanding.
Excuse me?
I figured it was me and maybe the...
Yes.
...before, yes.
Yes.
Yes. I, I know it's on the schedule, I just...
Great.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate, appreciate all the time you put into going through everything. It's a labor-intensive process, and it's going through and going through the records and getting everything prepared for you. But you've done an outstanding job, and we appreciate the report. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your cooperation too. And, you know, those little difficulties you're paying for person sort of was in transition and a lot of that's made it pretty busy for your business office this year.
See, I do have a question. Since you say there's only 10 pages of that big, that's pertinent to us, could you think of color coding it?
Um, maybe put like a special one for the presentation, sure. But we can't do...
Oh, you can. Not a lot.
You know, it's like, people are always like, can't you say something nice in your last one or two? Or like, we can't, we're not making it hate, it should be like this.
Yeah, thanks.
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 And just a thank you to Mr. Villio, I think he's not with us here this evening. I think going through this audit, having, having a clean audit, also his work with Mr. Rassikot, Dr. Manich, with the findings that we had in our food service program and being able to have a clean single audit there. I think it's certainly a testament to their collective work towards making sure that things were done properly. And also the thorough review of the ESRS funding as well in this audit report, I think is also a notable accomplishment that our business office as well. From superintendent's...
Sorry, Dr. Piter, I realize, and he just ran away. But we were high risk as a result of our last year's audit. When does that designation stop?
Three years.
Okay. Thank you.
So this was year one.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, that high risk was because of the food service fund.
Yep.
Reporting.
Irregular.
Right. Yep, the tracking of, yeah, a lot of it was just paid for work tracking the From superintendent's report, on tonight's agenda, I'm asking the board to consider the addition of a new position at the elementary level, would be for a PAWS teacher as an instructor. The position is twofold, one, we currently have two school counselors at the elementary level, however, half the time, they are pushing into the classrooms, which takes away from their time to work with students for individual counseling sessions, for group sessions, to attend IEP meetings, to help out with risk assessments, and to do a lot of the work that the counselors are designed for those positions. So, this position alleviates the counselors, so that each of our buildings then will have a full-time counselor serving in the capacity of what they, what they should be doing. And then, the, the PAWS instructor position, what that does is it helps develop the fundamental emotional and social competencies of our, our students, it builds that positive relationship among our students, it's designed to create a stronger culture with, within the, the school climate, helping students to set and achieve reasonable goals as they move forward, and also helps them build relationships among their, their peers, and also make responsible decisions. So I have that on the board agenda for, for the board's consideration for, for this evening. Also, in regard to student matters, once again, this summer, we will offer summer programming, information will come out to parents in regard to students who did not successfully complete coursework at the senior high level, in, junior and senior high level in particular, and then also running summer camps at the elementary, will provide just additional resources and support to build literacy and math skills, and also some afternoon programming as well, very similar to what we did in years past through the agencies that, that we've worked closely with. So a lot of that information will be coming out to, to students and parents within the next few weeks. I'll also give a plug for the Carlton Education Foundation, for the taste of Carlton, it is Monday, May 1st, it's from 6 o'clock to 8:30 in the evening, it's over at the Chartiers Country Club. More information can be found at carlton.org, and tickets are on sale for $35 each, they're also taking reservations for tables of age, I don't know. Featuring there, I think it's important to point out Bob Steiner, Car Nakka Coffee Company, Cooked Goose Catering, Dino Wine Cellars, Daggy's Eatery, Family Table, Fat Cat Mac and Cheese, Hadley's Brewing, Leo Greta, Megan Catering, Mediterranean Bakehouse, and also Parkway West will have their culinary arts, students participate in this as well. So, it's a great celebration of, of Carlton itself, to really come out and support our local community, support the education foundation that has merged and has, has contributed a lot to the educational programming here at Carlton that we're very thankful for. And that concludes my superintendent report.
All right, thank you.
Committee reports, Director Apple, anything to share about Parkway West?
Yeah, thanks. I'll be brief. Just a few high-level numbers here, so, we're gonna have a senior recognition night on the 17th of May at Montour High School, so, I've been to that in the past, and it's always a really nice, nice event. Talking about the, the budget, each of the 12 sending districts has to approve Parkway's budget, and pass your names on the slate, so, that's good news. So, just to give you a sense of, of what costs are like out there, so, per student, Parkway spends $5,500 about, and in the, in the area, Allegheny County, the different CTCs, the average is $6,100, so, not only is it the biggest CTC, but it's, it's also the, the, I guess you would say, the most cost-effective. What else? We are looking to start a masonry program, the ma, bricklayers and masons union have, have agreed to, because they, they have a need for new, new people to work and be members of the union, they, they're building, building for Parkway, it's gonna cost like $1.5 million, and that's, you know, cost of the sending history, it's a pretty big deal, when you think about it, and we're looking at starting class in the fall of 2024, if all the construction goes to schedule. So, beyond that, one kind of important number, just to give you a sense of how well students are doing out there, they take a test called the NOTD, which is, I guess, I don't know, what would you call it, like, the equivalent of the PSSAs?
Yeah, it's an occupational skills.
Yeah, 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 so, their pass rate is 96.6%, which is extremely high, 71% of the, the students passed on the advanced level, and 25.6% are passed at a competent level, so, yeah, good stuff happening out there. I do have to add, yeah.
And just to note, I think our, our scores at Carlton are a little bit above the average too, as far as our kids passing the NOTD compared to the average, so...
That's good.
Yeah, I think you've done a really nice job there.
Thank you.
Director Apple, is there any talk in the masonry program as they're looking to start it, given the buy-in from the masonry union of registering the Parkway program as a free apprenticeship?
I wish I could tell you, I don't remember, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I can find out.
Yeah, send them to me if not.
I think that is the intention, but I don't want to say it definitely is, because I don't remember what the actual news, that sort of thing, but, you know, they're definitely looking for kids to go straight into the, you know, journeyman and all that sort of stuff.
Any other questions or comments for Director Apple's report?
Dr. Dranchar, any updates on Pathfinder?
Thank you, Jim. All of you have gone to the Pathfinder, it means a lot to express, it's, there's been so many activities, last month, there was an amazing International Day, because as we're getting here at Carlton, so many people from around the world, it's also a microcosm, it's at Pathfinder in that we also have a lot of international students, they are often so happy, because in their culture, they put these kids away, and in our culture, we help to build them to be great Americans. Yeah, thanks. Thanks to you. They say that in past years, Pathfinder has had a hard time getting a quorum, and, and since I've been on board, almost every meeting is all five of our consortium school district, which is great, there's great interest in Pathfinder. We're gonna have Pathfinder graduation on Monday, June 5th at 10:00 AM, if anybody wants to come, but there's no graduates from Carlton. Right now, we have 90 students, and we're gonna have 14 graduates. We had an amazing supervisor of buildings and grounds, Ron Loschetter, he loves that so much, that, Pathfinder so much, that after he retired, he came back as a part-time employee, but this is the part-time stuff that he does, so essentially, he's there the whole time, as much as when he was full-time, and he's gonna be with us until June of 2024, but he wants to spend time with his wife and golf. So if anybody knows, I know we had a hard time, but if anybody knows of supervisor of building and grounds, we really need somebody, but up till next year. Okay? I think that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Director Zalinski, anything else to share?
So I had the pleasure of having breakfast with Dr. Manich on Saturday, when we were at this, just as a student conference, we had two nominees from our district, Austin Milner, and I apologize if I say her name incorrectly, Duwe Atomoshli, Atomoshli, is that?
Duwe.
Duwe?
Duwe.
Okay, I apologize. Unfortunately, neither of them were able to attend, but both were recognized. We had the pleasure of also hearing two guest speakers that were, had about 12 hours of notice, that gave great motivational speeches about overcoming obstacles in life, and their stories were, yeah, just very powerful, and the limited amount of time they had to prepare. One gentleman was a teacher from North Hills, and the other gentleman works with the Life Like Foundation, so it was, it was a great morning. Like I said, I wish our students had, they would have been there, but Dr. Manich will bring home their certificates, there are some gift cards, and, and they will still be recognized for that.
Awesome, thanks. Director Simsek, any other needs for us?
Yeah, I'll start with the legislative PSBA. Again, for advocacy day, the, the big talk is charter school funding reform, so some other things that they want to focus on for advocacy day in reference to charters, recommendations for fair reforms include applying a tiered special education funding system for charter school students that more accurately reflects the actual cost of providing special education. Also, applying a statewide tuition rate that represents a fair calculation of the actual cost to educate a student enrolled inside the charter school. They want to ensure that the public, as well as all school districts with students enrolled in charter schools, have access to important basic information and data concerning the charter school's performance and operation, and ensure that charter schools comply with the sunshine and right-to-know laws that apply to state ethics requirements, as well as arms-length transaction requirements to trustees of a charter school. So those are some things they really want to accomplish, and again, advocacy, advocacy day always focuses heavily on charter school funding, because it, you know, it affects so many, and at this point, 92% of school boards are calling for charter school reform, funding reform, so. Also, wanted to mention a couple grant opportunities, there's the PA Farm to School Grants, which require supplies training for teachers and staff, procuring of local foods for school cafeterias, educational opportunities including classroom curriculum, classroom curriculum, and experiential learning, field trips to local farms, school gardens for the purpose of education, or to supply the cafeteria, which would be really cool. So, you should apply by May 19th, if you're interested in that, and just, you can do a Pennsylvania Farm to School Grant Program. So that's, we talk a lot about the quality of the food in our cafeterias, and I think that would be something really nice for us to consider. There also have lawmakers proposing grant programs to fund solar projects in K through 12 schools, and we talk about that a lot, too. State Representative Elizabeth Fieldler from Philadelphia is proposing legislation under House Bill 137 that would allocate $500 million for the proposed program, open to school districts, intermediate units, career and technical schools. Successful applicants could use grant funds to purchase and install solar equipment, including prepayment in full or part of solar lease or power purchase agreement, permit fees, energy storage, utility, interconnection, and other costs. So this is something that's being proposed, it's not passed yet, but it's something to keep an eye on, because we didn't think we had an interest in that, so I wanted to mention it. Yes. Now, that's all I have for PSBA, and then the foundation, we've just talked all night long about Taste of Carlton, so, you know, I will just say what, what everybody else already said, is that it's a really good night, I hope that we see a lot of you there, and looking forward to it, we're hoping there's really good food, there will be baskets for raffle, and it's, you know, it benefits, it benefits the class, that's, that was my, my foundation report as well.
What's the website for the foundation information?
Carlton.org.
And for Ed Manich, Lisa has promised us that next year we'll have pierogies at Taste of Carlton, from our church. So buy your tickets for next year.
Wow, I get it, resale.
I do have something that I'm not sure that you folks know, that cyber teachers get Peasars retirements. Oh, you, that's news to me, that's a shock.
Yeah, all the charters are considered public schools.
Wow.
Any questions for any of the committee reports? If not, we will move on. Under Section 4 miscellaneous, I entertain a motion to approve the three items listed. Number one, the additions to the list of conferences for the 2022-2023 school year. Number two, the Carlton School District Special Education Plan, as required under PA, sorry, under PA Code 14.104, and number three, the contract submitted between the Carlton School District and Pediatric Therapy Specialist, Inc., starting July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion for those three items?
Some moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Under Section 5 Finance, we have four items, I entertain a motion to approve, number one, bills from March 21st, 2023 through April 20th, 2023, in the amount of $2,989,121.36. Number two, the following reports as reflected in the April 2023 Financial Reports Packet, the 2023 Treasuries Report, sorry, the March 2023 Treasuries Report, Investment Report, Board Summary Report, Athletic Fund Report, and Junior/Senior High School Activities Fund Report. Number three, the agreement from the Allegheny Intermediate Unit for the School-Based Access Program effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and last but not least, number four, the lease agreement between Carlton School District and Stage 62 for the use of the school for their musical production of Something Rotten. Do I have a motion for those four items under Section 5?
I assume moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, thank you, any discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Section 6 Personnel, entertain a motion to approve the three, the following three items. Number one, the personnel agenda, as was submitted and reviewed. Number two, to create a PAWS teaching position at the elementary level for the 23-24 school year, consistent with the terms of the CFT CBA. And number three, a Class 3 Life Skills Autistic Support Aid position at Crafton Elementary School, consistent with the terms of the SCA Units CBA. Do I have a motion for those three items?
Some moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, thank you, any discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Under Section 7 Student Activities, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additions to the list of field trips for the 22-23 school year, do I have a motion for that item?
Some moved.
Moved and seconded, thank you very much, any discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Old business, any director of the old business they would like to address? None, how about new business, any director of any new business that I can bring?
I do, actually.
Okay.
I'm resigning as PSBA liaison, and I am nominating Director Vugliano to take my place.
First of all, thank you, and seconded, Jessica, are you good with that?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much. You've done a great job, you brought us news and updates and, thank you, yeah, wonderful. And Jessica, thank you, Dr. Vugliano, thank you for volunteering to pick up the mantle.
Big shoes to put.
For sure. I said something, we have a motion for...
I guess you want to, motion to appoint, well, you want to accept the resignation first.
Okay. So, motion to accept the resignation. I'll entertain a motion to accept, reluctantly accept the resignation of Director Simsek as the PSBA liaison, do I have a motion for that?
I know.
Some moved. Some moved, seconded, thank you, all those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Jessica, Director Vugliano, as the new PSBA liaison.
Some moved.
Moved and seconded, thank you very much, any discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Should I abstain from that, so it might be...
But thanks for answering the question, and thank you for agreeing to do it, I appreciate it. All right, well, thanks again, Greg.
Thank you.
Any other new business? If not, we'll turn to the audience, any open forum questions, we did have one person sign up with a question.
Not really a question, so, my name's Wendy Hart, I live in Crafton Borough, two boys, a junior... So my name's Wendy Hart, I live in Crafton Borough, two boys, a junior and a sophomore. I should have done this a long time ago, but I just wanted to express my appreciation for your continued support, especially for our music program, the arts, you know, I mean, music is really close to my heart, but my junior was just representing Carleton at the All-State, the PME All-State Festival, First Chair French Horn, like, just, his accomplishments are because of...
Is that Sean?
Sean, yeah. And it was just such a, an experience, because we sat behind Mr. Priori, and that's where we got our start. And now, look, you know, we're, you know, getting a little teared up, but anyway, so, you know, just the, the support that our, our teachers have had, and, and the support that the kids have, and, you know, it's all, and I remember when he came with some other students to a board meeting, and they performed, and I remember you, I think mostly, and, you know, asking the kids questions, and just showing the interest, and, you know, it just meant a lot to me, and just to see how far they've come, and, and just your support and everything is so very appreciated, so just wanted you to know that.
Wendy, I think you and our whole board realize that the arts, especially music, keeps us sane.
For sure. And, you know, the squeakiness in the beginning.
Squeak hawk, but they were innocent.
Yeah. And to hear, you know, the Carnegie Elementary like that was just, it's amazing. Yeah, so I hope we can continue to, to grow, and, yeah, yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, and congratulations to Sean, to make it to the PME state national, or the, the state level as a first chair is certainly a testament to his skills and his practice. Developing music and talent, for some kids, the first part of it, there is a little bit of a natural draw towards, towards music, but it is a lot of work, a lot of practicing, a lot of moving past those squeaks in younger ages, but it's very, very dedicated work, and a lot of our kids have that, have that drive to, to be strong musicians, and Sean is just an example of that, and he's done a great job, so.
Well, it's the teachers who believed in him, right? It's the teachers who, you know, who, who present opportunities for the next step, and, and give them that opportunity, so, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. While we're throwing thanks around, we appreciate you coming to the meetings and asking questions and listening and providing feedback, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other open forum member, or any other open forum questions in the audience? If not, any more members in the open forum questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move to second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? We are adjourned.